All right, folks, we're here with George Forrest, who's running for Miami-Dade County Commission District 6. This is the seat currently held by Rebecca Sosa. And we want to thank you for joining us here. We're here at the beautiful Miami Springs Golf and Country Club. Thank you, George.
Thank you, thank you, Nestor. Thank you for having me.
So, you know, again, we appreciate the trying to get the community, get to know the candidates before they go out and vote. And we'll start off a little bit about your background, education, and the start of your career. So kind of tell us a little bit about where you grew up and what got you here to South Florida?
Well, I've been, I've been living in District 6 for, I want to say about 23, 24 years. I was raised here. My very young youth, I lived in the Westchester area.
Right.
When I was about 13, 14, my family moved to Coral Gables. I've been there for 23, 24 years. Now I'm raising my family there. I'm a sitting commissioner for the city of Coral Gables. I was elected in 2019.
All right.
My day job is I'm an attorney. Business and real estate litigation is what I do, along with some business corporate work type stuff for small businesses. And I always like to clarify when I mention that I'm a lawyer that I have no clients who do business with the county or have never done any kind of government relation work. I truly am somebody who represents or affirm that represents small businesses and businessmen, members of the community. My most important job is a father and husband to three little girls, Victoria, Olivia, Sophia, all of whom are four years old or younger. So we have our hands full.
Well, so how old are they?
Four, two, and 10 months.
Oh, wow. Congrat-- you definitely have your hands full.
We do. Luckily, we have a lot of help from our in-laws, our parents, and brothers and sisters. So we're able to manage.
And the wife is an attorney. You're taking up another challenge? I've heard that before, so I know how that goes. So, you know, let's start about one. What got you into the legal profession? When you go to school, did you always want to become an attorney? Or tell us a little bit about that.
I always thought that I may eventually become an attorney because my father was an attorney.
Okay.
I went to school and college thinking that I'd eventually get around to it. When I graduated from the University of Florida,
Okay.
I started working in the plumbing wholesale business. I was selling luxury toilets and faucets, still knowing that I would eventually go to law school. It's something that I grew up around the law firm as a child and then I sort of appreciated what it was all about. And then I eventually, after a year and a half of that, decided to go to law school, graduated, and then immediately joined my father's firm.
Okay.
Learned how to be a lawyer there for real. If law school doesn't teach you everything you need to know exactly.
Funny, real world teaches some new things they don't teach in school, right?
And eventually, we got it. We had a really good thing going and I grew to become my father's partner. Now we run our family office out of Coral Gables and do the type of work that I just described earlier.
Cool. You said you went to the University of Florida, but where did you go to law school?
I went to St. Thomas.
St. Thomas, okay. So you were here in South Florida?
Yes.
Perfect, perfect. All right, so you joined your father's law firm and then, you know, that seems to be going well. And then you run for Coral Gables Commission. What, tell us about what drove that? What was the motivation behind that?
Well, I never aspired to get into politics. In fact, when I was younger, it was not on my bucket list. And had you asked me, would you ever run for office? I probably would have said absolutely not. But then, you know, you get older. You become not the same person you were when you were younger.
Right.
I think my real segue into it was I was elected as the president of the Coral Gables Bar Association, which is the bar association, voluntary bar association for lawyers in Coral Gables and the surrounding areas. Through that participation, I started getting involved in a lot of work, not a lot, but some work with the city.
Yeah.
And really started to appreciate, you know, what the city was about. Started settling into my family life. Started looking more around and not just at what was immediately in front of me. And the opportunity came where somebody who I'd worked with as a lawyer before, I'm in the same office, but we've had the opportunity to cross paths several times, who was the city commissioner, decided to step down. And he suggested to me, I think you should, you should run. And I said, you know what? I'd been thinking about it more and more through my participation with our association. And I said, although I would never really aspire for much higher office, I can for sure get into. And I did feel compelled to a certain degree to get involved in my immediate neighborhood, which at the time was Coral Gables.
Right. And you're still a resident of Coral Gables today, right?
Still a resident of Coral Gables. I'm still a city commissioner.
Right, okay.
For the time being, through the end of November. And I found it frankly, once I got in there, it could be more rewarding than I thought it was going to be.
Really?
And that sort of was segued into running for county commission.
So what do you like the most about being, you know, the commissioner in Coral Gables?
Well, at its, at the core is the ability, this is, I think, what drove me to it from the very beginning, to be driving down the street and either hear about a good idea or have a good idea or see a problem and be in a position to really fix that problem efficiently. As opposed to sending off emails to your elected officials hoping they get answered, getting a meeting two weeks later, slips through the cracks. It actually put me in a position to actually get these things done.
What do you promise about so far in your, as your time in, as Coral Gables Commissioner?
I'm proud about a couple of things. I think there were several things I should say, but one of the most recent ones is my creation of what I call youth zones.
Okay.
Which youth zones are a special type of traffic zone, much like a school zone.
Right.
But in areas where there's not a school. So I started realizing that we have areas in Coral Gables that were very, have a lot of youth activity and should probably be treated like a school zone. In other words, should be certain queues and traffic signals that queue people to drive differently there. And even including reductions of speed zones and other types of traffic calming measures. So with the unanimous support of my colleagues, we created what you call youth zones. We should be rolling out now towards the end of the summer. Would have rolled out already, but like everything in life, certain materials to actually make the youth zone are on backwards.
That's a reality today in this kind of post-COVID reality, right?
Yeah.
You know, and it's something great because I think here in Springs, there are certain parks that we have where, you know, that there's Little League or soccer and, you know, kids crossing the street. And I think that's something that the entire county would appreciate to have youth zones for, you know, certain park areas where kids are actively outside with their family.
And Nestor, there's, second thing, if I could add quickly, sort of a series of measures that I do really pride myself on. If we're talking about priding ourselves on things. And it was a series of measures that I really said I was going to do from the beginning, which was to increase transparency in the local government. And a few things I did with that was, first, I passed a resolution for the first time to have public notices emailed on a weekly basis to all residents. Secondly, I created, and believe it or not, it was not that popular at first. Not with my colleagues on the commission now, they were for it. But the administration at the time, or commission at the time, was to allow for remote access to public commission meetings. So before, you had to show up to the commission meeting to voice your opinion.
Right.
Obviously, people have jobs. Ours are during the day. Some people are disabled. Some people are elderly.
Right.
So I fought for that to happen, got it done. Incidentally, or coincidentally, three months later, COVID came and then everybody did it.
Yeah.
But when COVID came, we already had the entire system set up.
So you're ahead of the ballgame there?
Ahead of the ballgame there. And also another sort of coin of that transparency package that I tried to pass, or that I did pass, was location-based notifications, which allow residents to sign up based on their address and receive notices, only the notices that concern things in their immediate geographic area.
Got it.
You get so many notices, you start ignoring them.
Right.
And when you get one of our location-based notices, you know, hey, this is something that concerns your immediate neighborhood.
Right. That's excellent that you've been doing that. And I, just so happened, I got a message last night about transparency over at Pinecrest. And this particular, and I'm going to keep the person's name anonymous, but was applauding some of the things that were happening in Pinecrest compared to, let's say, here in Miami Springs. That they were, they're a lot more transparent there. And I think what you're alluding to is the same thing, where notifications and not just, oh, it's on the website. But no, the, the--
Active.
Actively pushing and sharing the information as opposed to just, oh, waiting for someone to pick it up on a website hidden 10 pages deep.
Exactly. Although, one thing I've learned about transparency is you can never, ever have enough of it. The best you can do is just think of everything you possibly can and every, every different angle to get that notice and information out. You're still going to miss some people. The best you can do is try as many avenues as possible so you reach as many people as possible.
Excellent. George, as you're now, and you alluded to, you liked to be that person that can, you know, when you see something or hear a great idea, take it and take action on it immediately. And you said that that was part of the seed in terms of running for Commission District 6. What else kind of led you to, hey, I should, you know, run for this county commission seat?
Well, when I started trying to do more and more of that on the city level, more proactively, I realized what a lot of new commissioners realize at the city level when you get in is the, the, part of your plan always involves the statement, that requires county approval. That requires county approval. That requires county approval.
Right.
And I started, at one point or another, especially with traffic measures, by the way.
Yeah.
And I won't go into the weeds on it, but I did receive some resistance on the speed zones that I wanted to implement a new zone. And we had to find a workaround for that. Some of it didn't make sense to me. I thought it was a no-brainer, but apparently it's not to lower the speed limits where there's a lot of youth. But I started running into that wall.
Right.
Not only did I start running into that wall, but I started to look around and say, you know, what I'm trying to do here is be able to look at my daughters, for instance, and have them know at the end of the day that I really got out there and really tried to make a difference for the future. They have to go beyond the boundaries of Coral Gables. And when you start analyzing Coral Gables, we, we run a very tight shop. We have great finances. By the way, that is not, does not come easily. That comes from really working on it.
Yeah, discipline.
Being responsible, exactly, about it. But if I really want to make an impact in our community, I can't just pretend that the world ends at the Coral Gables city limits. I need to go out to those other places where I have so many family and friends and where I've spent so much time. I actually live on the edge of the Gables, so I spend a lot of time in West Miami, a lot of time at Flagammy. I have family and friends in Miami Springs. It's really the spine of Miami-Dade County District 6. That's how I describe it.
That's interesting.
It's kind of in the middle. It's kind of a little more narrow than the others, but longer. And to really, to really accomplish good things here, I'd have to go outside of the city.
So as you're heading to Commission District 6, what would be some of the kind of top, yeah, hot button issues or topics or things that you would like to tackle if you, or maybe your top priorities or goals if you became a commissioner for District 6?
Obviously, you can't answer that kind of question without immediately going to the affordability of housing. I mean, it's, it's probably, I know everybody's going to ask. That's going to be one of the points for everybody because it is an emergency at this time.
Right.
I think the two ways that we attack that, the main way we attack this is by increasing supply and putting more supply online.
Right.
The two ways I want to explore doing that, some of them are already being explored in the county. I've had discussions with county staff about it, as well as city commissioners. Is expediting the process so we can add that inventory quicker.
Okay.
True concurrent review, where we get everybody in the same room at the same time because we do have an emergency.
Yeah.
And make sure plans are approved comprehensively from start to finish so building can commence. Another thing I want to explore, that I've discussed already at length with key folks, is programs, and this is not a long-term solution, but it could be a bridge to get where we need to go while the rest of the construction is going on, is programs to turn existing dwellings into affordable housing on a near-term basis. That obviously involves a subsidy, which is not something that would go long-term, but it would get us over the hump. Because when you, it's not that easy right now to say, Nestor, that we're going to add X amount of units somewhere. Because what's going to happen is we're going to get those plans designed. People are going to turn around and realize the construction cost right now is about 40% higher than usual. So who's going to build this, right? So we need to attack, you know, it's going to be a two-pronged approach there. The near term, getting us into that next stage where we can truly build. And then on top of that, big considerations here are, A, I'm totally against any development anywhere near any single-family residences. That's a major point in Coral Gables, something that I politically grew up fighting against, right? And secondly, that infill and adding density doesn't entirely solve your workforce housing problem. Because at the end of the day, folks will live in apartments and condominiums, but then you also have a workforce that eventually will settle down, start families or not start families, but enter a different stage in their life. And they'll want the American dream, which is a single-family home.
Right.
So we don't want to retain some more workforce. We have to make that more available as well.
So, you know, and I want to follow up on a couple of things because, one, I appreciate you talking about single-family homes because, you know, as it does in Coral Gables here in Miami Springs, people freak out, wait, you're going to change the zoning for single-family homes? And nobody in the single-family home area wants, you know, also an apartment complex, you know, next door to them, right? So there's a big concern that while, I think everyone agrees that there's no choice but to go up. I mean, how else do you, there's no more land, right? We're built out, the east, we've got the ocean. On the west, we have the Everglades. That's it. The land is taken up. So, yeah, and especially in this kind of central core, in District 6, it's all built out in terms of, there's nowhere else to build. There are places where, you know, and I'll take this place in Hialeah, on Hialeah Drive and, I was, West, I'm sorry, East Fourth, where they have this new complex that they built up and apartments. And you see it's on 16th and Okichobee. And you have these kind of newer apartments. I want to say it's probably workforce housing, you know, in terms of middle-income kind of area. It's not like, you know, you have to be super luxurious to live there. Where else do you think, you know, let's say in District 6, just to, you know, where do you see our opportunities to build additional kind of units like that? What do you, what do you see or have you thought about that?
No, you're absolutely right. That's District 6, there's not that many opportunities left.
Yeah.
Perhaps there are some, you know, big box stores that have, that retail has gone in the other direction on. Perhaps there's big box stores that have too much parking that could be repurposed with some density in District 6. You know, certain, a project that Rebecca Sosa's been working on for a long time, the Ludlum Trail, adds more force housing along that corridor and green space as well. Because on the flip side of that, we run out of land. One of my other key priorities, something we've done very well in the Gables, is try to make an effort to acquire green space.
Yeah.
Because if you don't, then exactly what you were saying is going to, is going to result in, which is, you know, we're going to be left just concrete everywhere and no real green spaces.
Yeah.
So I want to try to aggressively make sure that while we do infill in the right areas, some will be in D6. I think the majority, yes, will be outside of D6 when we talk about infilling.
Right.
But that we work to preserve some of this green space, which with the economics of things, really, one of the only ways to do is for the government to acquire it and to turn it into a public use. A dream of mine would be for everybody in District 6 to be able to walk to, be within a two- to five-minute walk from a park.
Wow.
Whether it's a neighborhood park or a fully active park. That's a goal we have set in the Gables. And I believe we are 99% accomplished. And by the way, the way we did that is by acquiring homes, creating neighborhood parks, allows you to save certain specimen trees and also create a green space for people to spend time in their neighborhoods.
Maurice Faray, I listened to a speech of his. He was being recognized something and he goes, "My only biggest regret is not creating more parks." That was his biggest, he goes, "I was very proud of a lot of the things. The one thing I wish I would have done were more parks." And so I appreciate you hitting that because it's a, you know, we have limited green space here in Springs. We have the golf course. We have, you know, a couple of parks. We have a nice amount of green space. I don't say we don't have enough, but you always want more, more green space where you can. And let's face it, the people who are living in, if we're going to have more apartments, more, I call it the Manhattanization of Miami. As we go more up, those people who live, don't have a backyard and then require, are going to be utilizing those green spaces more. So there's going to be more demand for those limited green spaces. So I think that would be an amazing thing here for the county.
Yeah, we've also done, by the way, in connection with infill density, we've also done a great job over the last, I'd say about two years in Coral Gables, is ensuring that any increase in density comes with it as part of the same package, a nice, open, green space for people to enjoy.
Excellent. We talked about housing, other part, I would say that's kind of the big ones. What else, some of your priorities?
Well, housing is one of my priorities for sure.
Yeah.
The green space, acquisition of green space, creation of more preservation of green space is one of my priorities. Public safety has always been one of my priorities. That's why I received the endorsement of the police department, PBA, FOP, and the South Florida Council of Firefighters. Because I've been a leader, not that my colleagues in the commission have not, but also been supportive of it, of police and fire and basically the safety of our residents. I think that District 6 and Miami-Dade County could probably use more police officers. I believe that some of the unincorporated areas should receive a service more similar to the service that a municipality receives in terms of police, of local policing, neighborhood policing, and the benefits that come with that in terms of consistency.
Response times.
Response times, trust with the residents and the police. A program that I, that I created with the support of my colleagues in Coral Gables was expansion of the defensive tactic program for our police. This is essentially, for lack of better words, more heightened training in grappling and jiu-jitsu and wrestling so that officers can apprehend subjects in a more effective way, but in a way that's also safer for the officer and the suspect. Keeping in mind that the wrong interaction between police and a suspect can lead to extreme liability for the government and bad practices altogether.
And we appreciate that. Obviously, that's a huge issue, I guess it was two summers ago now. And, you know, where, what I, what I kept hearing was, look, the right thing to do is add more funding so you can train the police so they can handle these stressful situations that the regular person is never going to deal with. But these cops have to deal with, sometimes, you know, once a year, some of them more frequently than others, but some have these extreme situations that they have to deal with that the regular person is never going to see in their lifetime.
Yeah.
And these cops have to deal with it, be able to come home to their families and make sure that they leave the community in good shape while still getting the bad guys and doing what they have to do with the bad guys and dealing with these horrifying situations that, you know, the regular person doesn't have to deal with.
And when you're empowered with the right technique, you're less quick to do things that are extreme, I should say. And to me, it was a no-brainer because I happen to have wrestled from the time I was four years old to the time I was 21, all my life. So for me, somebody who practiced that every day and competed in that every single day, to me, it was immediately apparent that these officers were really getting exposed by, you know, their departments, not, by not really training them. And there's something you have to train frequently. That's why I created a whole wrestling and jiu-jitsu room in the Coral Gables Police Department. Because unfortunately, there, a lot of them are trained, you know, at the beginning.
Right.
And they might review it a couple of days a year when it's mandatory, but it's part of their daily jobs and they should, a lot of them want to become better at it.
Right. So we talked about police, parks, housing. Any other big items as you look to?
Well, to what, we have a, a population in District 6, which is the oldest out of any other district in Miami-Dade County. I think anybody who takes the helm in District 6 Commission Office need, with huge loss of unincorporated areas that don't have city assistance in the middle.
Right.
Anybody who takes control of District 6 or takes office in District 6, I should say, needs to be prepared to put the, to maintain, implement, and create the machine that is necessary to serve all these folks. I've been knocking on doors in various different areas in District 6. And we have a housing crisis coming, which we all know about, but I think there's an acute, an acute one coming with the elderly population. I cannot tell you, it's very sad, the amount of elderly folks that I've ran into who have been leasing a house, for instance, for 17, 18 years. Their rent has been raised beyond what they can pay.
Right.
They'll turn to their municipal assistance of their municipalities. Their fixed income simply does not cover the new increased rent. And the housing assistance is on a 10,000-person waitlist. That's going to hit District 6 very hard. So that apparatus needs to be put in place to be able to serve that aging population and to govern it the way I think Rebecca Sosa has really, which is she's governed with her heart and her conscience. She's really taking care of her people. And it's not going to be easy to fill her shoes, but that machine that's in place needs to be expanded even more as we face this, what could potentially be a crisis. So we can make sure that we can service all those folks who, a lot of them, because of their age, may have programs that are available to them they don't even know about.
And they probably don't have the digital connections to, you know, research some of those things. They really need that outreach to get the help that they need. It is a tough situation with the way prices have gone these days. You know, as we, we talked about housing. One of the other hot button issues here in Miami Springs has been RTZ, which is somewhat housing-related and the rapid transit zone. You already touched on one of the things that you don't want to mess with zoning around single-family homes. But, you know, Oliver Gilbert has this plan for the RTZ. I'll say, and forgive me if I don't get my map and geography correct because I know it's at the border. But I know for sure there at Douglas and US1, there's a brand-new complex by the Metro Rail Station. I believe it's in the Gables, but I'm not 100% sure if it's--
It's not in the Gables.
It's not in the Gables. I know it's right at that edge.
It looks like it is, but it's not, yeah.
It's right at the edge of the Gables, all right. Because I know 37th, like where I'm at, Sevilla, you know, it's up to 37th Avenue, but I'm like, I'm not 100% sure when it gets to US1. So, but clearly, there's, it makes sense in certain areas where there's, where there's higher density housing. You get the benefit of their Metro Rail. Tell us what your thoughts are on RTZ and how it should be implemented through different areas.
Well, I've dealt considerably with the RTZ, the rapid transit zones, as they, as they, what RTZ stands for. I was, my commission, City of Coral Gables Commission, actually voted to designate me as the main representative on the Miami-Dade County League of Cities, specifically for the purpose to, of dialoguing with the county and Commissioner Gilbert on this rapid transit zone.
Got it.
When it came out, it was a bit of a surprise to municipalities. Uh, there was a little bit of panic.
Yes.
Uh, involved, and, and rightfully so. You know, the RTZ is one of those things that, that the concept, when you describe it in one or two lines, sounds like a good idea, right? Increased density of workforce housing, workforce housing around our transportation. Makes sense, right? Sure. Now, what does that entail? What was the specific plan for it? Uh, and what it did involve, and I think, I think the biggest problem with it was that they tried to paint a, with a very broad paintbrush. Uh, there was a failure, I think, and look to the, to Commissioner Gilbert's, uh, credit, he listened. He really did, and he worked at least with the City of Coral Gables and many other cities, number one. Number two, he would defend and say, this is a rough draft.
Oh, 100%, yeah.
So nobody freak out, this is a rough draft.
I, I got, I'm going to, if you don't mind, I gotta say, Commissioner Gilbert came here to, to Spring City Hall and did a really great job in terms of explaining and, and, and what he was trying to do. And he says, guys, we're not going to mess with the first section here of Miami Springs, don't worry about it.
Exactly.
And, and I will say, you know, for a politician to come up, it's not even an ordinance or anything, just coming up, and that's what he wanted. He wanted the feedback early, uh, on, on this draft ordinance so that they can refine it and, and make it better. So I, I gotta say kudos to him for going out and, and being proactive.
Right.
We wish everybody would be as proactive as he was doing with this. So, so like, uh.
Yeah, so, so he, you know, we, we looked, obviously at that time, I was focusing specifically on the Coral Gables section. Uh, and it did take a paintbrush and, and increase the density, uh, across literally single-family homes, uh, on the, on the north and south sides of US One, which is obviously very unacceptable to us. Uh, but we were luckily able to work with him and show him, look, this is the density that over the last about seven or eight years has already naturally and organically been created along this corridor. We believe this is enough.
Right.
Uh, and for the time being, he's accept, he's accepted that. Uh, there's a second question, a second component there regarding the type of housing.
Right.
Uh, it can't be any type of density, but it has to be a certain, certain amount of workforce housing. Uh, and I think there's a role for the rapid transit zone to play, and I think there's areas that by all means should welcome that type of increase in, in density. Uh, because it will be an economic stimulus for them, it will help with transportation. Uh, but what I always continue to go back to is when you look at that rapid transit zone plan, you do have to look at every area for what it is. Look at ridership there, look at what's around there, specifically single-family homes. Uh, look at what density has already been added there, take that into account and, and find something that works for everybody, uh, without infringing upon, you know, our neighborhoods.
Excellent. Uh, we talked about RTZ, we talked about, uh, housing, annexation. Annexation, um, has been at City Hall, they just recently passed the first vote to allow, um, Miami Springs and VG and Medley and Doral to annex this area. Um, prefacing that with, the county had passed about 20 years ago, sometimes I, I, I feel like, why are you guys complaining about this? You caused this to happen. But I said, hey, we don't want, um, enclaves anymore. If an area, unincorporated area of Miami-Dade is surrounded by cities, well, we want you guys to, to annex those areas. Well, that wasn't the case pre-City of Doral. When Doral Incorporated, it created this little enclave here on 72nd Avenue and all that. The cities kind of fought initially, and then they all came to an agreement, hey, we have an agreement. And, you know, and then there's still obstacles and all that. Tell, what are your thoughts on annexation, um, like this, on, on enclaves and, and other areas? What are your thoughts on, on that?
Yeah, so annexation is always a very complicated issue, sometimes more complicated than others. And annexations come in different shapes and sizes. The, you have situations sometimes where folks want to annex, uh, where folks in the city, like Miami Springs by and large, want to annex a certain area, a certain enclave. And you have other situations where the folks who are doing the annexing, the majority of them don't really want to annex it or can't agree on it.
Right.
Uh, at the end of the day, what I've learned about annexing is it's not going to make everybody happy. However, uh, you are absolutely correct that there is stated policy, written policy, codified policy in the county, which has acknowledged that it is, uh, efficient to, um, to essentially eliminate these enclaves, donut holes, et cetera.
Right.
Now, I don't think that's a, that's a policy that's one-size-fits-all. I think it does fit for this particular situation that Miami Springs is going through. I do think it's also very, uh, fortuitous, if you will, that the neighboring municipalities, including Miami Springs, are all on the same page.
Right.
Um, and I congratulate the City of Miami Springs, and Virginia Gardens for that matter, for getting to a step which a lot of cities have not gotten to.
Yep.
In the annexation process, I'm supportive of it. I'm excited about how you could potentially rate, uh, lower your property tax, uh, your property tax bills here in Miami Springs and Virginia Gardens. You know, I did read about the ordinance that's, that's being kicked around.
Yeah.
Uh, which would require buy-in from the area to be annexed. Uh, I think there's some distinctions to be made there where you're dealing with businesses versus residents.
Yeah.
Maybe give businesses a vote, and where you're giving them, that, those folks getting two votes, one where they live, one where they, where they also.
Other property, right.
Where they also own property. Uh, but, but I tell you one thing that, that really raised my eyebrow when I read that, that proposed ordinance, which would I think pose a serious threat to Miami Springs, is that it applies to pending annexation applications.
Yeah.
And as a general proposition in the law, anytime you write a law, generally speaking, you shouldn't, you try to avoid what they call retroactive application.
Yeah.
Uh, it shouldn't apply to folks who already have invested time, effort, money into getting something done. And to say that it's going to apply to future applications is one thing, to say it's going to also apply to pending ones is, is I think something that you can look at and say it's kind of unfair.
Yeah, I was, I saw it this morning, and even though the city says, well, no, we're past that step, I'm like, yeah, but then they're saying they hiccup here and they throw it back, and all of a sudden you're backing this step, I'm like, ah! It's a little weird there. And, and as I was communicating with, with someone this morning, uh, from Virginia Gardens, and it is, we're not comfortable until a sign's sealed and delivered.
It would not be either. It would not be either.
Uh, right, so, you know, uh, if you, you know, um, well, first let's go over dates. We know elections are coming up pretty quickly. Um, when do people start to be able to vote by mail?
Um, last we heard, and we think this is pretty good information, absentee ballots, mail-by-vote ballots will go out on Thursday of this week.
Okay.
So folks should start receiving them Saturday or Monday.
Monday, and then, um, as far as, Election Day is what, August 23rd?
August 23rd.
August 23rd, so today's what, the 19th? So we got literally about a month, a month away from Election Day.
Right.
Um, although I think the majority of votes come in, I had it either through early voting or mail-in voting, come in ahead, and then you get the last bunch on Election Day itself. I like voting on Election Day, I think it's kind of a tradition.
I do too, I do too.
But, um, the reality is, you know, numbers-wise, the, the majority come in either through early voting or, or vote by mail. Uh, so folks can start to vote in the next couple of days and, and choose. Um, I would like to, to close out with, you know, why should someone, you know, they, they've heard for some of the other candidates, why should they vote for George Forrester this election day?
Well, I think what, what sets me apart from the rest is that, is that I've had a long tenure, relatively long tenure already as an elected official. You don't, the voter doesn't have to ask themselves or wonder, what am I going to do when I get there? I've just shown over the last four years the type of things I prioritize and the way that I've sort of emerged, as I like to think of voice of reason and common sense on the commission. Uh, I think it's also, I don't want to say important, but, but telling to look at who's endorsing me. Commissioner Rebecca Sosa's endorsing me, who's had this district now for over 20 years, knows what it needs and has seen me work in Coral Gables. Uh, Manolo Reyes, same deal, right next to Coral Gables, the city of work, the police, the fire. These are people who have seen me work over the last four years and have chosen to express their support, their strong support for me. That's because I'm a person who acts rather than, than talks, uh, and a person who's showing what I'm going to do when I get up to the next level of county. I think also something very important to mention, Nestor, is that I come without any kind of special interest or conflicts of any sort whatsoever. Some of my opponents in this race are, you know, lobbyists, uh, are riddled in the, in the world of government influence and government relations.
Right.
Um, and I think that's really what, what sets me apart at the end of the day from, from some of my opponents.
Well, any last words you'd like to share with, with the, the audience and anything we didn't cover that, you know, really near and dear to you that you'd like to share or something? It could be a fun fact, anything that you'd like to share with our audience, uh, here before we, we let, uh, let them go?
Not much, I, you know, I, I feel, I've been trying my best to knock on every door at District Six. It's obviously mathematically impossible to do it, I spent a couple of hours doing it today. Uh, but feel free to go to my website, uh, get my phone number and my email, because I invite every resident who wants to speak to me. Because I knock on all the doors with people who don't want to speak to anybody. So if you do want to speak to me, I will go out of my way and I will talk to you or even come see you next time I'm in your area. And I try to rotate around the district pretty much on a daily basis. Uh, so please don't hesitate, don't be shy, get my number, email Nestor, he'll give you my number too, you have permission to do that.
Appreciate it.
As many voters as I can speak to, uh, the better.
What's your website?
District, uh, Forresterdistric6.com.
Forresterdistric6.com, F-O-R-S, district6.com. And, uh, can they find you on, on social media as well?
Yes, I have, uh, on Facebook, I'm George Forrester.
Okay.
Uh, on Instagram, I'm JForresterJr., and I also have an Instagram page for my commissioner webpage, which is Commissioner Forrester.
Perfect.
And Twitter, I'm Commissioner Forrester.
Excellent. All right, folks, George, again, thank you very much, we appreciate you, you know, sitting down with us and letting the, the folks in Miami Springs, Virginia Gardens, get, get to know a whole lot more about you, we really appreciate it.
Likewise.
Thank you so much.